Evening, guys, and welcome to our Town of Charlton Selectment Meeting. It's May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six thirty. Let's all rise and pledge allegiance.
We're the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's go and approve the minutes from the meeting on April twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Community relations announcements and an open forum.
All right, we've got a bunch of announcements tonight, so I'll get through them. These are the announcements for the Board of Selectmen meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And don't mind me, I had some delta work today, if I'm slurring my words a little bit. Just a reminder, annual town meeting is Monday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. at the Charlton Middle School. Fiscal year twenty-five, senior abatement forms are to be turned in by six thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Applications can be found on the town's website on the Water Sewer page. Charlton Heritage Preservation Trust, Landscape Border Boundaries, The Power of Planting for Wildlife and Well-Being, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, seven to eight P. M. in Dexter Hall, Charlton Public Library. The Old Home Day Committee is looking for nominations. Please, the following awards need to be presented at Old Home Day on September first, two thousand twenty-four, Sunday. All nominations sent to the Old Home Day Committee no later than July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. There is an opening for a member of the Water and Sewer Commission to be filled until May two thousand twenty-four town elections. The Water and Sewer Commission is a five-member commission responsible for overseeing all matters related to public water and sewer in the town of Charlton. Anyone interested should fill out a Talent Bank, Talent Bank form found on the town's website and submit to Mary Devlin, no later than May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, for consideration. On Saturday, May eighteenth, at ten A. M. in Dexter Hall, Charlton Public Library, will host local beekeeper John Headley to present on the basics of beekeeping. This program is free and open to all ages, no registration is required. Topics to be covered: starting on Beehive, the physical structure of a Beehive, the bee colony and its organization, bee chores in and out of the hive, collecting honey, the importance of pollination. This program is free and open to all ages, no registration is required. And then we have the Memorial Day activities posted by the American Legion Post three-nine-one. On Wednesday, May twenty-second, a ceremony will be held at Masonic Home at ten-thirty A. M. On Sunday, May twenty-sixth, Post three-ninety-one will attend ten church services at the Charlton Federated Church on Main Street, assembling at nine forty-five. On Monday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, annual Memorial Day Parade will be held, held at Rainer Shine. Participants are to assemble at one-thirty for a step-off at two P. M. That's all.
Does anybody else? Open forum. Is anybody here for an open forum? Anyone? No, nobody over there. All right, appointments and resignations. Oh, she's up here.
All right, the first appointment is for the Council on Aging Director. I had sent out a digital appointment letter for Michelle Drum to be appointed as Council on Aging Director along with her resume. Her start date would be May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Tonight, you're asked to reaffirm her appointment.
Michelle, come on up. Let the crowd know. Yeah, that's perfect. Oh, whatever's more company.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I am excited to be here, grateful for the opportunity. My name is Michelle Drum. I have twenty years' municipal experience, fifteen of that is as a senior senate director. And I am very excited to work with, with Julia, Sharon, Ken, and Kathy, the, all the volunteers, which are the lifeblood of a council on aging. Of course, the council on aging with the support of, of the town administrator, all yourselves, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and all of the residents to offer services to the, our, the populations that are in need, our disabled, our elder, our dementia folks and their families. So I'm grateful for the opportunity, for the screening committee to offer me this. They have their confidence in me, and I'm very excited to be here.
Yeah, Michelle, I was gonna say, your background's fantastic, and I think that we're, that we're really lucky to have you. So really looking forward to see your, like, strategic vision and, you know, how we can best serve our seniors, et cetera. So with that, at least for discussion, I'll make a motion to reaffirm Michelle's appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. So happy, I mean, it's finally awesome.
We will see you very soon.
Thank you so very much. Okay, I'd like to stay. Job I'm up to.
Do you have insomnia? No, kidding.
All right, so the next appointment is for the Conservation Commission. There is one full-member opening on the Conservation Commission. They are recommending the appointment of the current alternate, Peter Capuano, to the full-member opening. Once the appointment is made, we will advertise for the alternate opening. I recommend the board make the appointment. Peter's here tonight.
Hey, Peter, how you doing? Good.
Good.
Thanks for volunteering to do this. That's awesome.
It's been quite the adventure.
Yeah. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself, people watching.
Well, I've been working with the commissioner for approximately six to eight months now. And I've been helping, you know, helping out around with rows out in the field here and there. And it's, it's great. I have to say, I really enjoy it. There's so much to learn.
So much to learn, I bet. Well, I want to thank you for coming up. This is important to me to have the people that are being appointed to come and actually, you know, talk to us and for the people to meet them. So thank you for that, truly appreciate it.
Motion to appoint Mr. Capuano, and thank you again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys want to take a picture or anything? Feel free, you guys. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, guys. Oh, it's so nice, supported by the family.
Much like a church, bring the kids in, I like it.
All right, traffic controllers.
All right, the next appointment is for traffic controllers. Police Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint the following as traffic controllers for the town of Charlton: Carol Knapp, Michael Kowalczek, Joseph Wazarak, Joel Erickson, Kevin Dennett, and Martin Dodd. I'd recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
So moved. Thanks for coming in, chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan have no comment on? You have no comment on this, or you're just?
Um, I just need a few more, and hopefully, and I'm gonna probably cut some for the, you know, next July first, because they haven't been working. So hopefully.
Yeah.
A lot of construction work going on, difficulty filling in the area, and kind of a hub for the area.
Good, all good.
Thank you.
All good.
All right, all good.
All right, next we have a couple of resignations. The first is from the Old Home Day Committee. Attaches a letter from Cedric Flower, resigning from the Old Home Day Committee. He'll be changing his residence in June to New Hampshire. The board should accept his resignation and a letter thanking him for his services in your sign folder.
Basha, through you?
Yes.
Yeah, Cedric is always a character, and he's just been fantastic with town from being the, you know, dressing up as town crier, all his, all his volunteerism, et cetera. So he will be definitely be missed. So motion to accept his resignation with deep regret, but I wish him well in his future endeavors.
Second with regret.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cedric, you're a wonderful guy. It's nice to pull him off.
No doubt, no doubt.
And the rest.
He's got some big shoes to fill, it is.
All right.
The next resignation is for the Council on Aging. Attaches a letter from Cynthia Cooper, resigning from the Council on Aging effective May second, two thousand twenty-four. She will also be moving out of state next month. The board should accept her resignation and a letter thanking her for her services in your sign folder. And we'll be posting the opening upon the acceptance.
Basha, through you again?
Yeah.
Again, Cynthia was a former select person and always put town above all. So again, Cynthia, I wish you nothing but the best in your future and move to accept her resignation with deeper regret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, and if I could just say, losing Cedric is a huge loss to the town, and so is Cindy. The Coopers have been involved, not just Cindy, but the whole family have been involved, whether it was Selectmen, FinCom, Moderator. And it's just, these are both huge losses, but I do wish them well.
Schedule appointments.
You have about five minutes on that one.
Oh, what do you want to do?
Uh, probably the discharge.
Yeah.
All right, do that.
All right. So we have a discharge of mortgage for one-twenty-five Blood Road. Attaches a request from the Treasure Collector, Virginia Porter, requesting a discharge of mortgage on the property located at one-twenty-five Blood Road that had a rehabilitation loan lien from the town of Charlton for loans that were issued to certain homeowners during the nineteen-eighties. The payment of, has been received for this loan and discharge needs to be voted up as approved at a selectment meeting and signed by the chairman, witnessed, and notarized following the vote. I'd recommend the board approve the discharge of the mortgage.
Madam Chair, through you?
Yeah.
Andrew, do you know, just out of curiosity, do we know how many more of these are out there floating around? Like, there's not a lot, right?
Yeah, we've been trying to kind of track all these down, and they really only come up when, when there's a point of sale, and they find that there's a lien attached. There doesn't seem to be a master file anywhere of when these were, but we've been trying to kind of track these records down when we can.
Eighties were a tough decade, I guess. Motion to approve the discharge of the mortgage.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do you want to do the scholarship?
We want to do the bid.
How about the bid, let's do the bid.
All right, all right. So Materials, Goods, and Services Award Bid. On April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, bids were received and opened for Materials, Material Services and Goods Bid. After review of bids, DPW Director Nick Peel is recommending the following bids be awarded: By two minutes concrete type one in place, ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents per ton to Mass Broken Stone of Berlin, Mass. Last year's bid, bid was awarded to Mass Broken Stone in the amount of eighty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents per ton. Full depth reclamation with application of liquid calcium chloride at a cost of three dollars and twenty-two cents per ton to Murray Paving and Reclamation. They were also the awarded bid last year at a rate of three dollars and fourteen cents per square yard. And stone seal, double stone seal, and ten percent asphalt rubber surface treatment at three dollars and sixty cents per square yard, double stone seal at three, at six dollars and twenty-five cents a square yard, and asphalt rubber at four dollars and thirty-five cents a square yard, all to Allstate Asphalt Inc. of Sunderland. Last year's prices were three dollars and forty cents, five dollars and ninety-five cents, and four dollars and twenty-five cents per square yard respectively. All of these were the load bids for each item, and I would agree and recommend the board approve as requested.
Madam Chair, through you? Andrew, quick question, are we taking into account the delta in the operating budget? Did we put an automatic increase in on that one?
We did not include an automatic increase, but we did have an increase in chapter ninety.
Oh, the chapter ninety, so we're just gonna do it that way? All right, that's cool. All right, Madam Chair, at least for discussion, I would have recommended the board, or I'll move that the board approve as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next three minutes. All right, let's do scholarships.
All right, two thousand twenty-four scholarships. The scholarships awarded by the Board of Selectmen are the Jesse Smith, Nehemiah Stone, and Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund. The Colby Scholarship recipient is chosen by the Colby family members. Seven scholarship applications have been received. Out of the seven, only one applicant qualifies for the Jesse Smith Scholarship as they're within the district guidelines for the scholarship. All applications have been forwarded to the Colby family for their review. As in past, as in the past, when the motions, motion is made to award the scholarship, the student's name is not revealed. This year, we would like to ask the board to award the Jesse Smith Scholarship in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. The award is based on the interest earned for each scholarship. The scholarship will be awarded to the student at their graduation ceremony. The recommended motion is included in the memo. Once awarded, we will notify the school of the award, and the student will receive the award upon receipt of college acceptance by our office.
Madam Chair? I move that the Board of Selectmen award the two thousand twenty-four Jesse Smith Scholarship to the applicant that qualified in the districts in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor? I have a question on this one. The two hundred and fifty, that's the fee? I mean, there's a set, set amount that we use?
That's the amount that it generates, it's rounded to the generated interest.
So if all of, okay, and the other four, five will go to the family to decide?
Um, that is.
They didn't qualify for, for, for this, they didn't qualify for the.
Nehemiah Stone and Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund.
But there'll be only one chosen?
Correct.
So I, I did read it, still no, Jacob, no Bay Path?
Um, I haven't heard anything.
Right, so what's, what's up with that?
I sent an email to the guidance counselor to ask if there was anything, and I don't think I received a response from that.
No, okay.
Thank you for doing that, though, Jacob.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, that's good. But you see, that would be nice if they would try to apply for that too, but thank you so much. And I'm assuming we will be getting the invitation for the graduation to present. So you'll have, all right, good. That's it, that's all I got.
Six forty-five.
It being six forty-five, we have a poll hearing for Brookfield Road. Attached will find a request from National Grid and Verizon, New England Inc., requesting permission to install one joint-owned pole on Brookfield Road. Also attaches a notice that was sent to the butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Chief and DPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the butters, and I would recommend the board approve the request. I'll see if anybody from National Grid is on the line.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's some people.
Would you like to read the public hearing notice?
Yeah, where is this? Yeah, I got it. Please be advised.
Yeah, we could hear you, we just need to read the public hearing notice and then see if there's any questions.
Okay.
Please be advised that the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May, what is it, fourteenth, at six forty-five in meeting room one, Town Hall, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass, to act on a request by.
National Grid.
National Grid.
And Verizon.
And Verizon.
That's right.
Can you repeat it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. To act on a request from National Grid and Verizon, New England, seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public lane, Brookfield Road, National Grid to install one J O pole on Brookfield Road beginning at point approximately one thousand one hundred eighty-three point six feet west of the central line of the intersection of Brookfield Road and Sydney Circle, installing midspan pole that will feed to Jennings Road U R D. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no problem.
Kira?
Yeah, so this pole is to help finish off the Jennings Road Underground, Underground Residential Development Program. The, uh, this is the last stretch that needs to be installed, and to hook up the underground primary back to route back into Brookfield Road, we need to have this pole installed at the end of the intersection. And the reason why we need a new pole rest and going off the existing pole sixty-eight is because there's already a transformer on that pole, so we don't want to keep our poles too crowded and have too much on one pole. So in order to have the risers to go from underground to overhead, uh, we need a new pole installed, installed.
See anybody, is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if there's anyone either.
If there's no opposition, I'm okay with it.
All right, I'm not sure if there's anyone online or the obvious.
I can't see a hard.
I don't have it.
I don't see anybody.
But maybe two, two attendees?
Two participants.
I'm assuming they don't want to get in.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's the same, I'm sorry. Well, barring anything else, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the pole position.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thanks, Kara.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What's next? The reorganization.
Michelle, by the way, we're never this fast, this is, I completely don't.
All right, so per the town's bylaws, section fifty-seven, Organization, the selectmen within seven days after each annual election shall meet, elect a chairperson and otherwise organize, and fix the time, place of their regular meetings. They shall adopt their own rules of procedure. This discussion is held by the board to choose a chairman, vice chairman, and clerk, so.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Selectmen Lancet and Selectmen Borowski as chair and vice chair for the coming year.
I'm fine with that.
Excuse me, yeah, I have a question on that, though. Since, since we're now in a, obviously, there's a, there's a rebuttal to the election.
Recount?
Recount.
A recount?
Yep.
We still have to follow through those rules? I'm fine with it.
So Madam Chair, what I, what I probably say to that is that, based upon our bylaw, that it's very explicit that we need to reorganize this meeting. If hypothetically things change because of a recount, there's, could always be a possibility down the road of another reorganization if a majority of the board felt compelled. But as of today, select person singer has been dutifully sworn in, and in my opinion, we should continue.
Okay, okay. Just so they would understand, because it was very narrow.
One or a thousand?
Doesn't make a difference.
All right.
Oh, do you have a second?
So now we have to vote.
You need a second on the motion.
So we have a second from Mr. Borowski.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes. Aye. Was that you, Nancy?
All right.
All right, Madam Chair, or Pete, however we're handling it, I'd make a motion, Basha, if you would accept the position of clerk, I think that would be wonderful.
I'm good with it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So Madam Chair, I know, again, there's been history of depending upon who runs the rest of the meeting, I don't know if you, Pete, like Kara or.
So, yeah, so I think I'm just gonna finish it up. There's only a few more points, and then Pete can take over. Who's fine with it?
Pete, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
What's next? All business.
All right, my review. So at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, the board was asked to conduct the annual Town Administrator Evaluation for the period of May first, two thousand twenty-three to April, two thousand twenty-four. The attached, attached are the evaluations of my performance provided by each member of the board. I sincerely like to thank the board for their support over the last, you know, I would say, year, but, you know, most of you guys, even longer. And I'm very thankful to work with a board that really exemplifies professionalism, collaboration, and really a true, truly a pleasure to work with. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, man? Just a quick thing for the audience, so we did a rating scale from one to five, five being the best. Our cumulative score for Andrew was a four-point-seven-four, which I believe at some colleges might be considered summa cum laude, or at least very close. I was gonna say, exactly. I mean, it is graduation season, so, you know. Just on, just on a personal note, again, I could not be more happy with Andrew's performance. He's navigated our ship of state, I think, better than anyone possibly could over the past year, between our trials and tribulations with our partners in Dudley, with finance, obviously, our school committee, all of our capital projects, the fire station, I mean, that list is, goes on forever. So again, Andrew, I couldn't be happier with what you've done, and I'm looking forward to what you do next year, because I know it's gonna make the town that much better.
Data to that one, and if everybody wants to read three pages of my stupid lyrics for you, they're happy to do so. But no, thank you very much. You make our job so much easier.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We didn't motion.
Well, it's really, you know, it's really because of Mary and Kara, they really keep me in line, they keep the board in line. They're really the backbone of everything, so.
Yeah, we certainly know that, don't worry, Mary.
All right, so police review, nothing, students, select person report. Who goes medal in?
Okay, so starting with athletics, I believe we talked about this student a couple weeks ago, but N E S N Senior Content Producer Paul Paquette interviewed Shepherd Hill baseball sophomore Angel Paulino, I believe that's how you say his name, about his no-hitter at Polar Park earlier this season. And if you're interested, you can catch Angel's segment on N E S N Clubhouse at twelve P. M. Eastern Standard Time on Sunday, Sunday, May nineteenth. On May first, Shepherd Hill Senior and Junior M I A A Student Ambassadors, with Porter and Hannah Fillion, attended the spring Midland Wachusett Inter-Scholastic League's Leadership Workshop at Ultimate Obstacles and Schoolyard in West Boylston. Students spent the day learning about teamwork and leadership exercises while collaborating with student ambassadors from the other twenty-five member schools of the Midwatch League on challenging obstacle courses and small-sided indoor games. Thank you to Luke and Hannah for representing Shepherd Hill at this event. Within the arts, join Shepherd Hill Show Choir students in learning to sing and dance at the Show Choir Boot Camp this summer. The camp is from July twenty-ninth until August second, with a performance at the end of the week to present what campers have learned. Registration is open to students from grades four to twelve, and contact Becky Bussier for more information. School-wide, the Shepherd Hill N H S is hosting their national, or sorry, their annual cornhole tournament on Tuesday, May twenty-first at six P. M. on Cor McNoddy Field, not sure what she was gonna name. Students and faculty have, are invited to sign up in teams of two. The winner's got a set of homemade cornhole boards by Mr. Ducharme, so good luck, teams, that's a pretty good prize. Finally, prom's coming up for juniors and seniors this weekend. Tickets have been sold, and the proposals have been made. Seems this theme, the theme this year is a night in Wonderland. Wish all students a safe and fun time, have the best night of the year.
Madam Chair, through you?
Yeah.
Madam, when you graduate, again?
The graduation is June second.
June second, all right, so you have, so you have one more meeting with us.
Oh, my gosh, I guess so.
That makes us happy. I'll give you accolades then.
All right, Jacob.
So for Bay Path, there hasn't been too many events happening recently since the school year is coming to a close, but there will be the math and biology M C A S tests approaching, as well as A P tests. Next, midterm grades have closed for fourth quarter, and teachers have been recognized with thank you cards from the Student Council for Teacher Appreciation, Appreciation Week. Lastly, for this section, the Model A Club has met with automotive and automotive collision students to share their experience in knowledge. And then for student achievements in sports, the animal science students have, well, pretty sure the juniors have earned their trade-specific certification. Next, students have been inducted into the National Honor Society with the first meeting being on the twenty-eighth of this month. And then the M I T Invent Team Design Challenge has been approved for the next stage. Finally, track has had a win over Monty Tech. Softball has won over Worcester Tech, and baseball has won over Barkwood.
Very good job, both.
All right, I just have a few things for tonight. So the Community Choice Electricity Program, we received the pricing for the Community Ag Program for the next renewal period. The successful bidder was Direct Energy, who currently ha, who is our current supplier, at a supply rate of thirteen dollars and seven cents per kilowatt hour for a three-year term. This is actually a reduction from the fifteen point five for watt-hours under the current contract, so this will take place in December.
That's actually fantastic.
Saying that for three years?
For three years, locked in at thirteen cents a kilowatt hour. Yep.
People should, they should pay attention to that.
Yeah, enjoy.
Absolutely.
And currently, we're recruiting for the positions of Health Inspector, Light Equipment Operator, and since Cheryl Savivas, who is our executive assistant to the Highway Department, was recently selected by the Water and Sewer Commission to become their next Operations Director, her position for Executive Assistant is currently open for applicants, so.
Cool.
If you want to apply, towncharlton.net.
All right, that's that. Other business?
Madam Chair, I have one item. I couldn't submit this earlier because of the election, and I didn't know if I'd be on the board as the, as the election, could win or lose, and I couldn't put something on a warrant if I didn't know if I would be here to talk about it. So I'm gonna make a same motion I had made last month. Hopefully, the last time I'll have to make it. And that is a motion to release all documents related to V G G in the town of Charlton, including all meeting minutes, emails, and documents, et cetera, in their entirety and unredacted, automatically at the conclusion of litigation.
So at the conclusion of litigation?
Exactly, same thing I said last time.
David, David, I would ask you, what is the urgency?
There's no urgency.
There's no urgency.
There's no urgency, so?
That's why there's a, a trigger mechanism, so that it gets released in the future when it's over. And so, basically, well, you didn't second it last time I made this exact same motion, so I'm doing it one more time in hopes that it will?
No, that isn't what you said the last time. You said you wanted to release it immediately.
No, that was the time before that. The last time had a triggering mechanism.
I, through the chair, I don't remember that part, but honestly, I, I think it's better to focus on this one now. And that language, I'm personally fine with.
And then, and what do your attorney?
So, when the judge, when the, when the judge?
When Andrew determines that litigation is complete, everything gets released, whether I'm on the board or you're on the board or all gone.
Okay, that's fine.
That's, that's more. That's more aligned.
Once the legal, I mean, once our legal team agrees that it's over, then this would just automatically go, which, based upon that language, I was.
Absolutely. But, but, but I, but I misunderstand, what was the urgency before?
It was said differently.
You had, you had to do it immediately.
I would invite you all to watch the previous meetings. This is not the first time that I asked for it with a triggering mechanism. In fact, if you watched the recordings of the previous meetings, I included this. So, as far as urgency, it's not an urgency because I've been saying this consistently in 2023, in 2022, I've been bringing this up forever.
But, but you recuse yourself from anything from VGG.
Correct, but I'm still a selectman and a resident of the town who believes that the people of this town have the right to know what's going on behind the scenes. And I believe that nothing should be hidden from them. And so, if minutes deserve to be released, then it should be released.
Yeah, nobody thinks that anything should be hidden. It's just said better now this time, when the conclusion and Andrew deciding what the attorney is advising.
Again, I would invite any members of the board or the public to watch the previous meetings, which included the same trigger mechanism.
I'd like to move the motion if that's okay.
Fine with me. So, we have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh. Bas, I have a couple of things and it's really more directed at Pete, to be honest with you at this point. Soon to be, or even current chairperson, it's, just something to think about for like future items. One is the language for potentially a fall town meeting around the select board stuff, just want to queue that up. We gotta talk about goals for Andrew, probably sooner than later. And also to queue up, we tabled for now some of the recommendations from the government study committee, like the town clerk. So, again, it, obviously not in June type of thing, but just so we start thinking about that. And Mary, that's also for you to remind me at some point.
And when are we going to the summer, June or July?
June.
June.
No, actually, I'll defer to Pete on that.
Phil can't wait.
I did have, um, to my brain, the thing about Jim. So, just to let you guys know, I, I received a notification from Attorney Cosgrove that he's not gonna be seeking a reappointment as town council for the next fiscal year.
Oh, yeah?
Who was it? Who was it?
Jim Cosgrove.
Oh.
He's deciding to pursue other endeavors.
I hope that means retirement, he deserves it.
So, I figured at, upon approval of the board, I'd put out a request for proposals for council services and bring, you know, essentially plan to bring it back, whatever proposals we receive for the July meeting for consideration.
So moved.
And, and, and we all, we all agree on that person?
Right, we would essentially bring in, you know, solicit proposals, see what comes back, and bring forward some candidates for consideration.
Do you have a second?
I'm sorry, through Bas, would it be okay to have the board, and I'm not sure if this is unusual or not, but because Attorney Cosgrove has served this town for so long, a very long, long, long time, I'd like to ask if we could have a certificate?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
For, for Attorney Cosgrove.
Jim's awesome. Is he gonna be there Monday?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, and we're gonna do it for his legal assistant as well.
Oh, yeah, she's cool.
Super. So, do we have a second? Did motion went through?
Oh, I said motion, I don't know if somebody said second.
I didn't hear the second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, that's.
All right, that's that. So, next meeting?
Town meeting, next week?
Yes.
We have the pre-meeting at six thirty.
Everybody, please come, town meeting. All right, that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, we did, Bas, thank you for a wonderful year as chair.
Thank you.